And we have a variety of people here to speak about Debbie and what a wonderful person she is and how qualified she is, which a lot of us know, but we're going to remind you. And she's qualified for a lot of different reasons and these people are going to address all those different reasons. So first, we would like to introduce Jen Reed, the past president for Pueblo School District Number 70. Jen?
Hello, everyone. What a great opportunity for the residents of Pueblo County to be led by someone with the skillset and character this office deserves and can be found in Debbie Rose. I have known Debbie for nearly a quarter of a century and remain in awe at the leadership abilities she continually displays in the various roles she undertakes in our community. I know Debbie best through her service as a board member and past president of School District 70. Debbie was the leading board member in an unprecedented, successful effort in annexing a portion of Pueblo West so that the community could be housed in one school district. The easiest resolution to the overcrowding issue was to close the doors to the students that the district had serviced for decades, but Debbie stood by what was right for these youngsters and their families, not caving to the politics nor to what was the quickest or easiest fix to the problem. I later had an opportunity to serve two years with Debbie as a school board member. I was gearing up to run for her seat when because of redistricting, I jumped into the race two years earlier than planned. What I would have missed by serving after and not with Debbie is incalculable. In every sense of the word, she was and continues to be my mentor. So many times, the items that came up for vote seemed so obvious, but Debbie never took anything at face value. She researched the seemingly unresearchable and always brought articles and data for discussion, oftentimes enlightening everyone in the room to the consequences of votes in either direction. Debbie is a respecter of people and the utmost character was always displayed in the boardroom. Even so, the directors and supervisors of the district understood that they had to know their issue inside and out because Debbie would question them until the topic was fully exposed. She would always end with asking the presenter, "Why is this good for kids?" and a status quo answer would not do. The veteran directors more often than not addressed that question before it was even asked, since they knew it was coming in the end anyway. Even after Debbie was term limited and no longer at the board table, her legacy lived on because some of the directors would continue to present, leading with, "In answer to Debbie's question, this is good for kids because..." Although Debbie's official service to the district ended over six years ago, it is not uncommon to see Debbie at school board meetings or involved in various functions of the district. A few years ago, the state required District 70 to undergo a school review in which Debbie undertook the lead role in that endeavor, which lasted for months on end. It is not enough for her to serve and consider it all well and good. She continues to be involved and invested in what she has given 110% of herself to. Debbie is determined and dedicated in the continued success of the district, ideally to the future leaders of our democracy. Finally, Debbie Rose knows to whom the tax dollars ultimately belong and to whom she is accountable to. She was a valiant board member in seeing the district through a $2 million deficit she inherited upon her arrival. Also, without fail, in successful bond elections, Debbie saw any and all projects delivered ahead of schedule and under budget. Every penny collected in times like these needs to be spent wisely, conservatively, fiscally responsibly, and under a microscope. Pueblo County has the opportunity to experience tremendous leadership and impeccable character when Debbie Rose is elected to the county commissioner district two seat. Thank you.
He's very tall. Next, we have Warren Montoya, retired policeman and Crime Stoppers Board Member, who is also serving as treasurer.
Thank you and good afternoon, everyone. I'm the aforementioned Warren Montoya and I am honored to be here to assist Debbie in announcing her candidacy for county commissioner. As a close friend and co-member with Debbie on the Crime Stoppers Board, I am always amazed at her dedication and drive. When there is a new project, especially those that are involving children, she is always one of the first to volunteer and works the hardest to ensure that there's an excellent outcome. As you know, Pueblo Crime Stoppers is putting on the B Street Bash every June. There's a lot of hard work involved and all board members put in longer hours on the Friday nights. Debbie is one of the first to arrive around 5:00 PM and leaves well after 11:30 when everything's done, all the people are gone, and all the places are cleaned up. Debbie is the first person I know that has invented the 28-hour day. She has not only a small business, she serves on the San Isabel Electric Board, serves on the Juvenile Parole Board, is a member of Crime Stoppers, and even if you call her at any time of day and ask her to help on a new project, she always responds where and when. I note when Debbie is elected county commissioner, if she puts only half the energy that she's put into the positions that she has, and when it comes to that, I am sure that it'll be more than double what all the past commissioners have done when they have been serving their tenure. Thank you.
And next, we have Ray Garcia from San Isabel Electric Association Board Member, and he is serving as vice president of the campaign. So, Ray?
And good afternoon. I'm here also to recommend Debbie Rose for county commissioner, although I don't live in Pueblo County, I live in Warfro County. I have known Debbie Rose for several years on the San Isabel Electric Board, a position that she was elected to and not appointed, as what happens at times on this board. I find her to be very dedicated to whatever position she occupies. As you've heard before, she does her homework, so she is always prepared for every meeting. She represents her constituency and all San Isabel Electric members, while being mindful of her fiduciary responsibilities to the company. She knows the difference between governance and pandering. She always adheres to policies governing board behavior. She's not afraid to speak up, even in minority situations. She represents San Isabel Electric in all Colorado at the state and federal level whenever we attend state legislative and congressional functions, and she does a thorough job of reporting back to San Isabel Electric from whatever meeting she is asked to attend on San Isabel's behalf. She listens attentively and always tries to get along with everyone. I believe she would be a great member of the Board of County Commissioners of Pueblo County and would represent Pueblo County well. For these reasons, I recommend Debbie Rose for county commissioner.
Okay, next is Eleanor Valdez, Director of the San Luis Valley Rural Electric and plus the Western United Electric Supply Board Member, serving as secretary. And there you are, okay.
Good afternoon, and when I was traveling this morning over La Vida, I loved the beauty of the mountains, the beauty of just seeing the snow and everything as I came around. But this morning was special because I came with a special joy and I traveled here to support my dear friend Debbie. I am here because I truly believe you have a great candidate in Debbie Rose for Pueblo County Commissioner. It is an honor to be here on behalf of Debbie Rose. The reason I traveled to testify for Debbie is because I believe and trust in her ability and her strong personality serving as a county commissioner. Debbie and I were introduced serving as directors for electric cooperatives. We have both served for many years, and in all these years, I have always admired Debbie's professional commitment, dedication, and her hard work ensuring system efficiencies. Debbie and I have taken many classes together to upgrade our educational skills. Debbie is self-motivated, a good listener, and lets others know that they are special and what they have to say is important. She studies the issues before making any decision. I have seen Debbie in action as a board member and an officer of Western United Electric and have shared in her issue discussions. Debbie is always prepared and does research on issues before making a decision. She makes decisions because they are the right thing to do. Debbie's concern for others and the community is most evident in any action she has to take and any vote she has to make. She has been active in many organizations, both statewide and locally, and she has worked with finances and budgets on all these committees. Therefore, her experience and knowledge is within a wide range of issues. Lots of people want to ride with you in the limo, but what you want is someone who takes the bus with you when the limo breaks down. This is Debbie. I strongly support, appreciate, and encourage you to vote for Debbie Rose as your future Pueblo County Commissioner. Debbie will improve voters' lives or situations if elected. Debbie Rose is committed and will bring results. Thank you.
Okay, and next, we have Army Veteran and Active Community Member Joe Vaejos. Joe?
Okay, I'm here to encourage you to cast your vote for Debbie Rose as Pueblo County Commissioner. I've just recently met Debbie, and everything I've met about her and got to come to know her has been very friendly and very helpful, and she's very open about what she wants to do. I put 100% of my trust in Debbie because I have seen her run a small business, which is her store out in Beulah, and I've seen her sit on several different boards and assist with troubled youths. Debbie has created and balanced a budget for District 70. Debbie's great time management skills and dedication to hard work helps her and her community along with all her daily duties. I've also seen Debbie volunteer her time to support Army veterans like myself, missing in action warriors, and other type of veterans. I've seen her help needy children get clothes, we've gone to luncheons, and I've also seen her handle the fun stress of like all the local parades running around when it's cold trying to park cars in the middle of the street. All she does this and everything she does is with a smile on her face. I haven't seen her look stressed out or feel like she has a burden. Everything she does has been with a happy smile. So again, I'd like to encourage everybody to get your friends, family, and yourselves to support Debbie Rose and believe in Debbie because she truly believes in us.
Strong community leader, we all know him, good guy, general sales manager at Rocky Mountain Boat Company and involved community business leader for many, many years, Tom Reyes. Tom?
I'd like to personally thank Debbie for the invitation to speak on her behalf. I was excited when I first heard about the announcement that Debbie made for her consideration for Pueblo County Commissioner. So immediately, I began to think about what makes Debbie special and unique, other than the fact that she serves on many business and civic boards, making a difference in our community. My beloved brother, Richard, lived two doors east of the Beulah General Store, and I remember him described Debbie as a friend, a caring and honest person whose concerns reach out far beyond her community. I first met Debbie some 25 years ago when her and Mike just opened the Beulah General Store. Now, I guess she'd been there for a little bit, but I was servicing the store with Pepsi-Cola. And it was the same time that I began to respect her business savvy, her confidence, her competence, her professional yet casual demeanor, and her overall concern for her customers and the Beulah community in general. You see, not only did she create jobs in the community, she developed and grew the business based on the needs of the community. So we might ask ourselves, "How do you do that?" Well, you know, simply put, you ask the customer. I believe the message therein to the community of Beulah was that she valued their input and respected their ideas. It breeds success. It's a business philosophy that she carried with her into office when she was elected to serve as a member of the Board of Education for District 70, using that same resourceful aspect. She was instrumental in moving a school district out of the rears into 10 million to the good. Talk about balancing the budget. She and the board accomplished that mission without restricting services to the district. You know, we meet a lot of people throughout our lifetime and we become intrigued and inspired by their character. What I have observed about true leadership are virtues akin to integrity, credibility, vision, and courage. I think Debbie fits that mold. And we call these people the movers and the shakers, the people that get things done, the same people that make our community a better place to live. Please bear with me as I share with you a list of people whose leadership I believe has steered Pueblo in a positive direction. And I know we would all be proud to insert Debbie Rose in the ranks of those movers and shakers who leave their mark on our community. Now, these names are not chronological or alphabetical, and I may be dating myself. Those names begin right here at the Robert Rawlings Library, this very room. Dr. Riles. These are inspirational leaders who I believe have touched us all. Frank Evans, Tony Fortino, Lou Quigley, Mel Takaki, Tom Jagger, Pat Kelly, Jerry Daherty, Don Abrams, Bert Herrford, Paul Califano, Kathy Farley, John Rosales, Dorothy Butcher, Al Hayden, Mike Sallardino, Judy Weaver, Keith Swordfinger, John and Pat Klomp, Anthony Nunez, Patty Urjavec, Michael Shado, Ray Kogosik. Who's on your list? I was exposed to politics at an early age when my father, Henry Reyes, began his run for public office. And you know, one of the most profound public statements he ever made was that, "No public elected official should cater to any ethnic or special interest group, but that service to the community should be paramount." Debbie Rose exemplifies that very statement. She's the perfect fit for Pueblo County Commissioner, a community leader that we can trust to make the right decisions, a neighbor who has the greater community interest at heart, a dean whose ethical and business practices are in alignment with community needs and desires. Vote Debbie Rose. Thank you.
And now, of course, we're going to have our featured speaker. And the one thing I wanted to point out about her good sense is that I was looking at this announcement of her fundraiser on Sunday. First of all, she had the good sense to have it at Elektronica's, and then secondly, she had the good sense to have it and in time for the football games. So anybody with that kind of judgment will make a good county commissioner. There've been a lot of really wonderful things said about Debbie and about her community involvement. Also, what I would add is Rotary, where I met her, she's an extremely active member of Rotary, not just somebody who shows up for the lunches, and is very involved in a lot of other causes in the community that didn't get mentioned. I think my favorite thing about Debbie above all is just a characteristic that I think that sometimes we don't think about it, but if you do, there's nothing worse than all the EORs in the world that can't, something's wrong with everything, something's always bothering them, and sometimes people go in and out of that. Like somebody mentioned, was Joe mentioned? Not with Debbie. She is relentlessly positive. I mean, that good mood is there. I don't, if I ever saw her in a bad mood, I think I'd pass out. She is one of the most relentlessly positive people I have ever known in my life, and I think all of you can probably say that about her. And she's going to conduct this campaign in a relentlessly positive way, and I know the reason we're all here is to hear her. And so, without further hesitation, Debbie Rose, Commissioner in waiting.
Well, thank you, thank you. I'm very humbled, first of all, because of all the kind words that have been shared today. It's very honoring as far as that. What I wanted to say is that a very wise man, my father, told me one time, "To do what matters." He said, "Life gives you many paths to follow, so choose the ones that are a true benefit to the others around you. Make sure your results are worth the effort you put into the work." And you know, and I have tried to follow this advice throughout my life. I really wanted to try to do what matters. You know, it was my honor to serve on Pueblo School District Number 70 from 1997 to 2005. While on School District Number 70 School Board, "Do what matters" prompted me to work hard to establish the Futures Academy. It mattered that at-risk students had access to challenging curriculum instead of the traditional four hours a week of tutoring. As a school board member, "Do what matters" moved me to work actively for the voter-approved annexation in Pueblo West so all kids could attend their neighborhood school. Also, "Do what matters" helped me to develop a national-recognized leadership program for potential school board members to improve better decisions on behalf of students. In addition, "Do what matters" prompted me to help failing schools through work coordinated by the Colorado Department of Education. I believe that all, yes, all kids deserve and have a right to a first-class education. You know, over the past 30 years, I have had the wonderful opportunity to serve on numerous community boards and organizations, such as the Pueblo Area Council of Government. And when "do what matters" meant to find a sound funding source for our seniors so they could have the services that they needed. As a current board member on the Crime Stoppers, I work with a team that focused on "do what matters," so we developed an anti-graffiti program that will help educate kids to prevent graffiti in our community. Since 2005, I have been the elected board member representing Pueblo West, Beulah, and Wetmore on the San Isabel Electric Board. As a San Isabel Board Member, "Do what matters" has been the push to establish internal operational efficiencies to maintain stable rates for the members for over three years. "Do what matters" guides my effort on other boards that I represent San Isabel, such as Western United, serving as the treasurer. In 1983, my husband, Mike, and I bought and began operating the Beulah General Store. "Do what matters" jump-started a small business operating at a loss when we brought it to one of those employers, being a major one in Beulah. "Do what matters" means being part of the volunteer fire department. "Do what matters" keeps the whole staff actively involved in maintaining a sense of community through offering free resources to various groups and organizations, plus promoting collaboration to get the job done, being a true benefit to others. Pueblo County residents are facing some very tough challenges. According to the Children's Campaign, poverty has increased over the past five reporting years by over 5%, with one in four children living in poverty. Another challenge for Pueblo, unemployment is a stark reality for 10.4% of our residents, your neighbors. So today, I am announcing not only my 2012 bid for Pueblo County Commissioner because I am ready to face those challenges, plus others with focus, but I also am putting together a website, roseworksforpueblo.com, that is kicked off today, that will have job listings for our people in Pueblo so we can all get back to work. "Do what matters" for Pueblo means, as your elected representative, my Pueblo promise is to act. A, accountable. C, collaborative. T, transparent. First, accountable. I'm going to review all fees and policies, making sure each are practical and business-friendly. I'm going to follow up on all of your inquiries and you'll get an answer. There will be weekly updates on expenditures that the county have made and the work that I have done on your behalf. Collaborative. I will work with all entities to tackle the tough issues. We can't do it alone. It's gotta be a combined effort, and that includes the poverty and the unemployment. I plan to promote the jobs through the fairs and through the job posting. We will get people to work. Transparent. There will be monthly town hall meetings scheduled throughout the district and so that you know what is happening on your behalf. And there will also be weekly updates, if you want, that will be emailed to you on what has been happening. My Pueblo promise means to be financially responsible, create jobs through business-friendly policies, and work for the taxpayer by doing what matters for you. You know, I want to thank you all for coming today and in sharing in this announcement. Please spread the word that I, Debbie Rose, am running for Pueblo County Commissioner, and I need your vote, but I am that candidate that promises you, Pueblo residents, that I will act on your behalf, and I will do what we think matters. And I think you can tell from my track record, that is what I do. So the campaign team and I look forward to working with each of you throughout this year, and God bless, and stay safe. Thank you.
I'm happy to be here today, and I'm happy to endorse Debbie Rose as county commissioner. And we ask for Pueblo voters, Pueblo County voters, to place their vote for her in November. I love working with Debbie. I work with her with San Isabel Electric Association. As the communications manager, we work together in the capacity of communications and contributions to our communities that we serve in Southern Colorado. Debbie is always available to help me to bring out all the good things that San Isabel does. She works really hard for our members. She balances her work as a board member, not only representing Pueblo West, the Beulah area, and Wetmore, but with the overall membership as well. And she also always wants to do what matters, and that's what's important to us. As the communications manager for San Isabel Electric and as a member of San Isabel Electric Association, I ask you to vote for Debbie Rose as Pueblo County Commissioner.
I believe Debbie is the right choice for Pueblo County Commissioners and for Pueblo County. I've come to know Deb very well as a friend, and as a friend over the last 15 years. I've watched her take on leadership roles in many organizations that she's involved with, and she never ceases to amaze me. Deb always does the right thing for the people in any organization that she becomes involved in. I believe that Debbie will do a good job for Pueblo County and the voters of Pueblo County. So as a registered Democrat, I am serving as Deb Rose's treasurer, and I am very proud to be her treasurer, and I ask all of the voters of Pueblo County to listen to Deb over the next seven or eight months, and you will know why she is the right choice for Pueblo County.
My name is Phil Romero, and the reason why I think people should vote for Debbie is when I first met her, I kept hearing all kinds of good things about her. I kept seeing her at other meetings, and I noticed that whenever she... I kept seeing her at other meetings, and I noticed that whenever she said anything, she followed through with what she said. I really wanted to get to know her better, so I volunteered for her campaign, and I just wish her the best of luck, and I'll do everything I can to help her. I think she's the kind of people who we need in office.
My name is Ruben Espinoza, and as you said, I'm from Rye, Colorado, and live in, really in the Rye-Collar City area, which we call the Green Horn Valley often, but actually, I've never, the last time I voted for Debbie, when she was running before, and one thing I was really impressed about is her knowledge of economics, finance and accounting, and I'd seen her up around Cross City and in the Rye area, different organizations and so forth, and I saw her as a person of integrity. And at that time, I really didn't know her personally, but I just had that feeling about her. And I looked at a lot of her past record, and I said, "This is a person who really should be there right now." And right now, again, I think that she's a person that should really be there because of the situation in our economy and with her background, and she's still a person of integrity. And so, that's how I feel about her. And so, I'm going to help support her up in that area, and I think she is absolutely the right choice.
My name is Sarah Black, Kristen. I'm from Rye, and the reason I'm supporting Debbie Rose is purely based on what she does for the community and her work ethic. She's so about her community, she's so about taking care of them, bringing them up, doing everything she can, but her work ethic is really the proof in the pudding. She is so, she works hard all the time, and everywhere you go, you see Debbie, and she's always doing something, and it's something that matters, and it's something that's worthwhile. She really puts rubber to road on everything she does, and I'm just so impressed with her work ethic above all else.